Good evening. It is Monday, November the 4th, 2019, 6:00 PM. Time to call the Garden City Council Meeting to order. This time I'm going to ask Pastor Dale Simmons from Jasper Springs Church to lead us in our invocation, please.
Father, we're thankful tonight that you love us. This is our month of Thanksgiving, and Lord, we're thankful tonight for these men and women who give their lives to be able to serve our community. I pray tonight, as we conduct your business, that you would give us wisdom and insight, and that you continue to watch over our community and keep us safe. Thank you for all you do for us, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask the clerk to call role.
Mayor Botham.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kicklider, Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Cody.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
And Councilmember Tice.
Here.
Councilmember Kicklider's under the weather, and he's not going to be with us here tonight. This time, we have a special presentation, so I'm going to call our police chief up.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate you just giving us an opportunity. As the Garden City Police Department continues to move forward with our Officer of the Year Program, part of that program is we have a quarterly selection of the Officer of the Year. So I'd like to take just a minute to read this memo. Basically, this is an honor you can be proud of, as the selection process involves the nomination and vote by the entire Garden City Police Department Supervisor and Command Staff. Your performance over the last several months has had a direct impact on our agency's success and overall safety of our community. We appreciate your hard work and dedication, so congratulations on a job well done. I know we've got the mayor.
Congratulations.
This time, we're going to open up our meeting for any informal comments. If anyone will want to come forward. Seeing no movement, we have a formal presentation, and I'm going to turn that over to the City Manager to make the introductions, please.
Okay. This evening, we've got some representatives from the Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT, to talk to City Council in our community about the I-16, I-95 interchange project and also the I-16 widening project. And Mr. Ron Nelson, Mr. Quentin Alberto are here this evening. I saw this presentation the other day at the MPO meeting, so it was very informative, good information about the project, the schedule, some of the key things that we're very interested in here in Garden City. I'll ask the gentlemen to come on up and just kind of give me the nod, and I'll change the slide for y'all. And I do apologize, we had some video difficulties with the middle screen, but I think the side screen worked pretty well. I remember your slides were not overly wordy, so to speak. Anyway, gentlemen, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Felner. Members of City Council here at Garden City, thank you for the opportunity to come speak to y'all tonight. My name is Ron Nelson. I'm the Georgia DOT Project Principal for this project, so the I-16, 95 interchange improvement reconstruction and I-16 widening from I-95 to I-516.
And we're excited about this, probably as much as y'all are, too.
I can imagine y'all are, that's right. That's right. So just some of the overview of what we're going to discuss tonight, just our major mobility investment program. We'll do a brief overview of that, and then the 1695, the improvement project itself, and some of those highlights that I know you're interested in knowing about, some of those details, and then our project timeline as well, as far as where we are and what you can look forward to and expect all the way up to completion. So our MMIP, Major Mobility Investment Program, it's an $11 billion program that has 11 projects These projects are due to become under contract sometime in around 2026 is what we're looking for with GDOT. And the Innovative Delivery Office with GDOT out of Atlanta is responsible for bringing this project to this area. We're very excited about it, and this project will be delivered using a design-build delivery method, which is new to this part of the state. I don't believe we've had a design-build project down here to date at this time, so this will be interesting to walk through this whole process. This is actually two projects, so it's actually the interchange itself improvement, and then the actual 16 widening. It's actually two separate projects under one contract, where the state of Georgia with DOT has a contract with Savannah Mobility Contractors, is the contractor, and their engineer of record is Jacobs Engineering. So we're looking at a map of our MMIP locations, with two of them here in the Savannah-Chatham area. We've got the other nine projects mainly in and around the Atlanta area. One of them is the interchange project, and then one is slated to be the interstate widening project. Some of the benefits that we're looking forward to on this particular, of these particular projects is, of course, efficiency with moving traffic with the interchange itself along I-16, enhancing driver safety, and then also trying to put in place a barrier-separated lane, collector-distributor lane along I-95 that'll affect the northbound lane as you access I-16 westbound, and then also as I-16 eastbound accesses I-95 northbound. So it affects the I-95 northbound, and we'll get more into that as we move along, too. We'll obviously add new lane miles along I-16, and we're going to be widening to the median, and the widening will basically start on the east side of I-95, and it'll progress all the way to I-516. About a six, a little over six mile distance to add those additional lanes at the median. We're also going to add a hurricane crossover. We currently have two hurricane crossovers, but we're going to have a new hurricane crossover that'll be added to the west of Dean Forest, going towards I-95, and we will eliminate the two that are currently in place, but the new one will actually be a two-lane hurricane crossover for evacuation purposes. Of course, we're going to increase the merging opportunity for traffic. We'll lengthen some of those out to allow folks to have better driver confidence access in I-95 and the interchange itself off of I-16 and I-95. And then we'll have some form of intelligent transportation system involved as far as cameras and overhead portable changeable message signs, or I'm sorry, fixed-in-place message signs, changeable message signs. It'll be in place on bridge structure signs. We have contracted also with HNTB, and they'll be our day-to-day project management. So Quentin Alberto is our day-to-day project manager, so I'm going to ask him to come forward, and he'll talk to you more about the project specifics regarding what we can expect in the future.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'll kind of pick off on some of the things that Ron had explained to you. So this is an interchange and a widening project, so the western loops, and as we'll kind of go through the details, and I kind of give you some details of the specific areas. So the interchange improvements themselves are replacing the western loop ramps configuration into a turbine configuration ramp. We're looking at lighting the interchange itself for night, putting a connector-distributor on the northbound lanes of 95, to have a dedicated lane there, and then widening to the inside of I-16 with a full shoulder, inside shoulder and full inside lane. So you'll have, you know, we have a four-foot shoulder today, it'll be a 10-foot shoulder in the future, with three 12-foot lanes and then a 10-foot outside lane, so that'll allow, you know, emergency vehicles and whatnot in the future to actually use both sides of the interstate in the future. So as we're looking at the interchange itself, here is the existing cloverleaf configuration. Here are the proposed turbine configuration. So as you can see, the ones that are actually highlighted there. So I'll go ahead and go to the next slide here, and this kind of is a plan view of the interchange itself, of the items or the directions that we're replacing. So the perimeter ramps themselves will all be replaced and widened out, so if you're going in the east or westbound direction, if you're wanting to go north, you'll still go north the same way you would from 16 to 95. However, instead of going through the interchange at 16 to 95 to go south on 95, instead, you'll be exiting at that same point, and so if you see that kind of light yellow direction, you'll actually be looping around the intersection to go south. In addition, if you're coming down south on 95, wanting to go towards Savannah, again, instead of driving through the interchange and looping around to go in towards Savannah, you will exit at the same point as if you wanted to go west on 16, just like a traditional ramp. It'll loop around and take you into town. If you look at the dark green section, that's going to be our connector-distributor. What that is, is widening of the existing facility. So if you look at the 95 bridge itself, it's being widened to the east side, and will be barrier separated. So there's a separation in there. So when people are exiting and entering, that weaving motion actually occurs onto the side, and the northbound traffic is unimpeded. If you looked in general to try to classify what these improvements are, it's trying to take the decision point away from the actual interchange of two interstate facilities and moving them out, so that decision point is now about a mile prior to reaching the intersection of the two interstates, and just makes overall moves that, that type of weaving movement outside of the interchange itself. As we stated as well, we'll be widening to the inside of the roadway. The project itself is a design-build. It's a $260 million contract, and it started a year ago. So for the last year, we have a design-build team that's been basically doing final design and working on its environmental clearance. That process of design will occur all the way to the summer of upcoming year 2020. However, we're looking to try to start early construction activities, so anything that we can get cleared or we can get final plans on, we're actually looking to try to actually start those activities. Hopefully, by the end of the year, realizing that that is only two months away, that's the timeline that we're actually looking to start breaking ground. We have spent the last couple of months in preparation, knowing that we're looking at trying to start construction activities towards the end of the year, so we've had efforts to reach out to SEMA. We've reached out to first responders, making sure that everyone was aware of the project, understanding of the coordination efforts that's going to go on, and making sure that everybody was clear on the roles when it comes to hurricane evacuation and responding to incidents and so forth. Because this is a design-build project, the contractor themselves or the development team have a lot more responsibility, and they've taken the ownership of the responsibility that would more traditionally be handled by GDOT. So when there is a state of emergency declared by the governor, then that contractor actually hands that facility back to the state, and they maintain it just like they normally would. So they're required during construction to make sure that the two existing hurricane crossovers that are today stay in service in some form or another, and that the roadway is put in a condition to help traffic evacuate in case of an evacuation. In addition, the work itself is planned to be predominantly during the night, so you'll see activities mainly between 7:00 PM and 6:00 AM on the 16 and the 95 interstate. On 16, there may be daytime activities during the day, but again, it's intended to be all off-peak time. There is no planned long-term interchange closures, so there won't be any long detours. There may be a temporary out-of-service item that's over a weekend for a short interruption of access, but no long-term closure of the interchange itself. If there is any type of detour that occurs along that corridor or closure itself, the contractor itself is required to give 30 days' notice, so there'll be ample ability to discuss any type of impacts or anything to the facility. As far as timeline is concerned, as I stated, they've started the project about a year ago, or in our phase of final design. We're hoping to get into construction. The contract is to have substantial completion by the summer of 2022. So by the third quarter of 2022 or start thereof, they're supposed to have access to the facility and open, and that's what the contractor's working towards. On this last page, we want to make sure that everybody has the ability to keep up to date with facts or any type of notification about the project. That's email address that's on here. We have a monthly newsletter. If there is interest of the council or anybody that here is in the city, if they send an email to this address notifying that they'd like to be added to the monthly newsletter, they will be added to the list, and they'll be on that distribution. In addition, we have a project website that provides updates, frequently asked questions, so forth on the project. In general, that is all we had to cover about the project.
Well, I like your design-build concept. I hope that goes well, because I have a background in construction. I've done a number of buildings where I teamed with an architect and then built the building, and it only makes sense that the person that's going to do the building is working hand-in-hand with the designer, and I hope that goes well. I think that would, with a project of that size, it could save a lot of change orders. That's a big, big project. Now, I know our dominant interchange is separate from that project, but we really have a keen interest in what's going on over there, so could you share with us any news on that?
About the only thing I can really tell you is we received bids on October 25th, and we are still reviewing the bids, and we're trying to come up with a final determination.
Great.
That's where we stand right now.
Thank you. Any other questions for? Thank y'all so much. We're really excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Mayor, we will put this presentation on the city website.
Okay.
So that anyone who's interested in looking at the slides and especially that contact and informational data there on the last slide, they can get that from the city website, so we'll try and get it out there as much as possible.
Thank y'all. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you again.
This time, we have a number of public hearings. Our first one is our 2020 proposed budget. I'm going to open up this public hearing at this time, and I'll ask the City Manager to give us an overview.
All right. It's that time of year again where we present the next fiscal year budget, which begins January 1st, and similar presentation, what we've given the last several years, trying to provide an overview of the information such that the council and the community can understand how things have changed, how they stay the same, and how we're going to move financially out of this year and into next fiscal year. The first slide here deals with the General Fund budget overview, and that has to do with the primary services that the city provides. We show them there in terms of the different areas between public safety and general government, public works, and then community development. These are the services that I think most people interact with at the city on a regular basis. The General Fund obviously is our largest fund, providing revenue for this particular set of service areas. The projected revenues for 2020 are slightly higher than 2019, and that has to do with a couple of different areas. First of all, tax money is expected to go up a little bit. At the end of the day, it's about a 4% increase in the amount of revenue that we're going to see in the General Fund next year. So once again, General Fund revenue continues to hold pretty strong. We're seeing an increase once again in tax money, fines and forfeitures, and some of our other revenue sectors there. The breakdown of those revenues, once again, taxes between property taxes and local option sales tax, that represents about 2/3 of the General Fund revenues, and that's been pretty consistent over the last several years, that our tax revenues are the primary funding source for the General Fund. General Fund budget expenditures, you can see a lot of ups and downs between the different departments between 2019 and 2020. At the end of the day, just like the revenue side, the expense side only has a 4% change from one year over the next. Most departments held their budgets pretty steady. There were some increases that were a little bit larger. Public Works is up a little bit, Recreation's up a little bit. A lot of that has to do with services being enhanced and/or capital projects being undertaken, not to mention personnel costs and some of the other things throughout all the departments in the city that are, of course, going to drive up costs one year over the next. Our personnel headcount is about the same as what it's been, around 105 to 110, but once again, each year, the cost of services goes up, especially on the personnel benefit side. General Fund expenditures, once again, police and municipal court, public works, recreation, some of our larger slices of the pie there, once again, consistent with years past. The next set of funds are enterprise or business funds, representing stormwater management, water and sewer, sanitation, and fire protection. These are the services where a fee is paid on the monthly utility bill for the service that's provided. We've been operating this business model, if you will, for the last several years, and it seems to work out fairly well in that, once again, the money paid is very much correlated to the services received. First fund we'll talk about is the Fire Protection Fund. Fire Department, once again, about a $2 million a year operation, slight increase of about 3% from 2019 to 2020, some changes regarding different aspects of the revenue and expense side, but overall, pretty consistent from one year over the next. Stormwater fund is up a little bit in terms of revenue as a result of new construction, additional fees being imposed, and correspondingly, we have a similar, on the revenue side, we've got a similar correlation on the expense side, dealing with services being provided for stormwater runoff services. The sanitation fund budget did change quite noticeably, 12%. This was a combination of things that were imposed on us by Waste Management, our third-party provider. Waste Management sent us a letter just a few weeks ago saying that the Consumer Price Index had increased proportionally from one year over the next, and then they had increased costs at the landfill for disposal. So what occurred there as a result is we had this 12% increase in costs, so the city had to go ahead and modify the sanitation rate in direct response to the additional cost that was imposed on us by Waste Management. So you can see here that our current rate of $15.84 for sanitation services in the month went up to $17.50, once again, reiterating that that was driven pretty much exclusively by what Waste Management had imposed on us in terms of increased cost for operation. We're still a relatively low sanitation fee here in the coastal Georgia area, so we'll continue to try and be as efficient as possible and continue to negotiate with Waste Management to keep those rates down in the future years. Water and sewer enterprise fund budget, this was nearly flat, projected next year versus 2019. Water and sewer revenues continue to be very steady and consistent year over year, and then correspondingly, the expense side is also consistent year over year. Some of the capital projects that we have planned for next year are listed here. Our wastewater treatment plant continues to age, and as a result of that aging process, we are in need of getting some equipment replaced out there that's reached its life expectancy. We've got some work we're doing on our discharge of treated sewage out to the Savannah River in a joint project with the City of Savannah that we've got to get paid for next year. We've got to replace our computer monitoring and management software that runs the water and sewer operation, the wells, the lift stations, from kind of a master control perspective. That also is about 20 years old. We've got to get that replaced next year. Town Center's going to get an irrigation system put in, so we've got a cost on that. And then we've got just some other projects we've got to do totaling, you know, the number you see there, which is about, what, $2.3 million, or $1.3 million? I'm going to take my glasses off here. But that capital improvement total is pretty consistent, what we've been doing over the years. The total debt service that we're seeing next year in our forecast is about $775,000 for the year. These debt service numbers between the Jifa loans from the state and the revenue bond from 2013 definitely continue to be kind of the backbone of our capital improvement program, and the forecasted amount that we'll be paying is a number that we've been tracking for many years now, as we continue to systematically go through our capital program, implement it, and then pay for it. As a result of the water and sewer operation and keeping up with the expenditure side, as we've done, I guess, about six or seven years in a row now, increasing the water and sewer rate by just about a dollar and a half or so for the residential customer using about 5,000 gallons a month of water and sewer services, so we are still kind of the middle of the pack there. But I think one thing that's key here is that, as I talk to some of my colleagues around the county, not everyone raises their rates, so it's really easy to keep your rates low if you never raise them. But at the same time, if you don't methodically increase your rates, you don't have the revenue stream that you need to reinvest in your system the way we have over the last now 10 years or so with those different capital projects, which is keeping our system operating to the best of its ability, and I think that's really important, to once again, continue to have a robust capital plan and not keep deferring a lot of those things that need to get done. The SPOS fund for next year, fiscal year 2020, is a little bit lower than this year. We're about $2.5 million this year and about $1.9 million next year. The reason why is we carried over about $600,000 from into 2019, so our SPOS revenue is up a little bit, and some of our other funding sources are all pretty steady, but we're not having that fund balance carryover that we had in 2019. But we've still got a nice list of projects there, once again, focused on the infrastructure and public safety needs that we have to address as a city, and reinvesting that money into the issues that certainly are very important to service delivery and public safety services to our constituents. Special Revenue Fund is our hotel-motel tax fund, and that money comes in at about $360,000 a year, and then we break that out between the Savannah Trade Center over on Hudson Island for their ongoing needs. The General Fund gets about half of that money for operational uses, and then the Tourism and Convention Bureau gets about 1/3 of that money. So this continues to be a pretty healthy little source of funding for different programs here in the county and specifically in the city. The Tourism Fund, Convention Bureau, they've got their budgets shown here, and they've got their revenue forecasted in at about $400,000, and then a corresponding list of expenditures that are along the same lines. They've obviously gotten a lot of new momentum this year, so to speak, in 2019, and we expect that they're going to continue to be a viable, ongoing operation 2020 and beyond, so we're very pleased with how the CVB very pleased with how the CVB is working so far. Alright, that's my last slide, I have questions and discussion here if anyone has any other questions that need to be asked or further detailed.
Yeah, I just got a couple comments, Ron. Our fire fee only generates about a third of the revenue we need to run our fire department, roughly correct, so we have to bring that out of our general fund.
Yeah, there is a transfer from the general fund into the fire protection fund to cover, probably, you're right, about two-thirds of the budget, so the fire fee covers a portion of it, the general fund covers the rest.
And every year since we implemented property tax, we have rolled the millage rate back each and every year.
Yes, we have, so we started in 2014, but each year, as the digest has grown, fortunately because of the development that's occurred in the city, the growth of the digest has then been able to, you know, be offset with a rollback of the millage rate, so there has not been effectively a tax increase since we instituted our millage in 2014.
And we actually have the lowest millage rate of any municipality that has property taxes in Chatham County.
I believe if we're not the lowest, we are certainly one of the lowest, yes.
We are the lowest.
We are the lowest.
I look, and we are in a very strong financial position because we have more in our rainy day fund than we're required to have by law, so overall, we're doing real well with our budget.
Yeah, this is the sixth budget that I've been involved in, and I feel like the process just kind of fine tunes itself a little bit better and a little bit more each year. A lot of thanks goes to Rhonda, the finance director, and her staff, and the effort they put in to provide us the information so that we can structure what I believe are very sound financial budgets, and you know, it's no secret that as 2019's coming to a close, things are looking really well in this year's budget, so I have no reason to believe that the work of the city staff, and Rhonda in particular, hasn't put together a sound financial budget for next year, and this time next year, we'll be having the same kind of discussions about our ability to live within our means, but at the same time, get important things done that are a priority in the community.
And Rhonda was next on my list, and Rhonda wears two hats, she's our clerk of council, she's also our finance director. You did a really good job putting this budget together, it was really easy to read and really easy to understand. I thank our city manager, Ron, who does an excellent job, and I think our department heads who are out here tonight for what they do, and I'm just real pleased with the position that the city's in right now. I think we're in very good fiscal shape, we're just about completely full with employees, and I think that's attributed to the efforts we made to improve pay and benefits, and I see a very bright future for us. Now, does anyone on council have questions, comments? Is there anyone out in the audience that has any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna close this public hearing. We have two other public hearings, alcoholic beverage license manager application, Dean Forest Beverage Center, receipt of public comment on an alcoholic beverage license manager's application by Michelle Lee to sell spiritus liquors package, wines, beer, and our malt liquor, malt beverages at Dean Forest Beverage Center, 1550G, Dean Forest Road, Garden City, Georgia. I'm gonna open up this public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to come forward to speak in favor or against? Seeing no movement, I'm gonna close this public hearing. We have an alcoholic beverage license manager application, Bills Mini Market, receipt of public comment on an alcoholic beverage license manager's application by Ann Patel to sell wines, beer, and our malt beverages at Bills Mini Mark, 1550D, Dean Forest Road, Garden City, Georgia. I'm gonna open up this public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to come forward and speak either for or against? Seeing no movement, I'm gonna close this public hearing. This time I entertain a motion for consideration, city council minutes dated 10/21/19, and workshop synopsis dated 10/28/19.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion made in a second. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. This time we're going into our staff reports. Received monthly department report from Director of Human Resources, Pam Franklin.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I've got fall allergies, so please excuse me. The report for October, we are still seeking Public Works Senior Water Repair Tech and Water Repair Tech 1. We have no new hires to report for October. Since this report was completed and submitted, we have had one separation from employment for the month of October that I didn't get to include. That leaves our full-time employee count at 106, turnover for this month at 1%, overall we're doing very well. No unemployment claims, and best of all, no workplace accidents this month. And that completes my report unless you have questions.
Any questions for Pam? Thank you Pam.
Thank you.
Next up is Director of IT, Ben Brigman.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
This is the Technology and the Building Maintenance Report for the month of October. We upgraded one laptop, we completed the installation of the SSI project, which is the police record management system.
I'm glad you said that, 'cause I had no idea what you were talking about.
It's what, if you get a ticket, or the court system and all, it's all tied in to keep our records for the police department.
Gotcha, thank you.
We're working on upgrading the camera and recording system and microphone system in the courtroom here. Shortly we'll be having that installed, and then we're also upgrading our NVR system, which is our video recording system for the security and such of the city hall, Cooper Center, and Public Works facilities. Moving along, currently on social media, we have 101, sorry, 1,145 followers on Facebook, 494 on Twitter, and only a major thing we did last month in the building maintenance was replace two motors in the ERU-1 HVAC, which is the system that's right above you. That concludes my report unless we have any questions.
It's definitely working.
Is it working?
Thank you Ben. Next up is Director Parks and Rec, Cliff Ducey.
Evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I have the Parks and Recreation Report for the month of October. I'll start off with the senior center, we had 42 per day attend the senior center with 39 per day eating the lunches, with a total of 815 lunches served and 119 breakfasts served for the month of October. As you know, it's a very active senior center that we have, they're all there enjoying their golden years and having a good time. They just got back from Pigeon Forge, I mentioned that in the last report, that they were going. So 31 of our seniors went to Pigeon Forge and went to Dollywood and saw some of the exhibits and shows there in that area. Also, there's gonna be an AARP Safe Driving class held at our senior center on November 13th. It's a $15 charge for anybody that's an AARP member, $20 for non-members, and by taking that class, they'll learn a lot and also they'll see a drop in their auto insurance premium. Also, they'll be celebrating their Thanksgiving lunch on Tuesday the 26th at 11:00 a.m., if you wanna make note of that, and they're also gonna celebrate every Thursday during the month as Grateful Thursdays. They're also gonna take two-day trips to Hilton Head this month, and they're gonna eat out twice at night, one at Bade's BBQ and one at Texas Roadhouse. So like I said, they're having a good time over there, and you know, what else they have to offer on a daily basis as far as their fitness center and other activities, so if you're interested, join them. Also, our 54th Annual Revel Ball has started in Garden City, we have 30 teams this year. We've got five teams from South Carolina and teams from all over Chatham County, Eppingham County, and Bryan County, so that's gonna go all the way through till the 16th of November, that'll conclude on the 16th of November. We still have the high school football season going on with games on Friday and Saturday nights, and then we'll have a playoff game next Friday night. And then we'll move on into basketball season. We're now taking registration for basketball, $25 for residents, 35 for non-residents. We had a big basketball program last year, a lot of teams, and we hope to repeat that this year. We go from ages three to 14 in basketball, both boys and girls. The last thing I was gonna mention is our Cooper Center, we've been doing the renovation, it's gonna be complete on the 14th of November, with a special thanks to all those who have volunteered and helped out with that, and a special thanks for Public Services and Habitat for Humanity. Really looking forward to getting back into the groove of things, we've had a few rentals lately, people renting for baby showers and such, but we'll open back up for all the kids in the neighborhood on the 14th of November. And that concludes my Parks and Recreation Report. Any questions?
Yeah, I think it's, Cooper Center's looking real well, and I appreciate the effort you put in it Pam, and Garrett has been doing a good job with the painting, and that's not his expertise and that's not in his job description, but he's doing a wonderful job.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Chris.
Thank you.
Any updates from you, Ron?
No sir.
Okay, we got a number of items to vote on. First one is resolution to debris service agreement renewal, I'm gonna ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to renew service agreements for debris removal, reduction, and disposal services.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Ron, could you give us an overview of that, please?
Yes, the city keeps under contract in the event of a tornado or hurricane or something that, you know, would generate the kind of debris removal services that these firms offer, and by having three firms on, standing ready to go, when we're threatened with a tropical system or what have you, we simply make a few phone calls and get these folks mobilized and ready to spring into action if need be. This exercise is gonna renew their contracts, which end at December 31st for another two years.
We have a motion, a second voting on the motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. We have a resolution for employee emergency incident pay policy amendment, I'll ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to amend the employee emergency incident pay policy, setting forth procedures detailing employee obligations and use of leave time during time periods when circumstances impact city's ability to open for business, as well as procedures for paying essential and nonessential employees during declared emergency incidents.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second. And Ron, if you'd give us a overview of that, please.
Yeah, having a very comprehensive policy for when a natural disaster is coming and is occurring, Hurricane Matthew, Hurricane Dorian, whatever it may be, having a comprehensive policy is the key element to being eligible for reimbursement from the state and federal government. So as a result of our ongoing storm events of the last several years, we continue to fine tune this policy to make sure it's the best it can be, not only for managing our employees' staffing needs, but for ensuring that we have the best potential for reimbursement from the state and federal government. I'd like to thank Pam Franklin and Jackie Jackson for their work to get this in front of y'all tonight.
Thank you. We have a motion, second voting on the motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Resolution Biscuit Hill Road Right-of-Way Abatement? Abandonment. Ask clerk to read that by heading only, please.
A resolution to authorize the permanent closing disposal of the southern 835.17 feet, more or less, of a portion of Biscuit Hill Road north of the Georgia Railway, 150-foot right-of-way, as described on Exhibit A and Exhibit B of the resolution.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
And Ron, this is some property that doesn't benefit the city any longer, and we have an interested party.
Opportunity to sell it for some revenue to come into the city, and we're gonna have had no use for it really ever, and will not have a use in the future, so this is the most viable thing to do with this strip of land.
Thank you. We have a motion and second voting on the motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2020 alcoholic beverage license, I'd ask clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to authorize the renewal of the Garden City alcohol license for the 2020 calendar year.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
And we're just renewing all of them we have in the city at one time?
Yeah, we batch them up this time of year and go through this exercise to get them renewed for January 1st.
Okay. We have a motion, second voting on the motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Alcoholic beverage license manager application, I'd ask clerk to read that by heading only.
Motion to approve an alcoholic beverage license manager's application from Michelle Lee to sell spiritus liquors by the package, wines, beer, and malt beverages at Dean Forest Beverage Center, 150G, Dean Forest Road, Garden City, Georgia.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
And chief, they met all the requirements. Thank you. We have a motion, second voting on the motion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Alcoholic beverage license manager application for Bills Mini Mark, I'd ask clerk to read that by heading only.
Motion to approve an alcoholic beverage license manager's application for Ann Patel to sell wines, beer, and malt beverages at Bills Mini Mark, 150D, Dean Forest Road, Garden City, Georgia.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
And chief, same thing, they meet all the requirements, thank you. We have a motion and second voting on the motion, all in favor say aye. Motion carries. Is there any other business that needs to come forward? Entertain a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you all.